Good evening. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning appeals for August 14, 2017. As a matter of housekeeping, at this time if you could shut off all mobile devices in order to have a proper meeting. At present, we'll move into new business, ZB 2017-32 for special permit and variance, applicant David Foss for 682-684 Lawrence Street. The applicant is seeking special permit approval and request for relief from the zoning board of appeals for the property located at 682-684 Lawrence Street. The proposal involves constructing a two-family home in a traditional mixed-use zoning district and requires a special permit under section 12.1 and a variance under section 5.1 for minimum lot size and minimum lot area for dwelling unit, frontage, side yard setback, for the minimum setbacks from lot lines under section 6.1.10, and any other relief that is required of zoning ordinance. Is anyone here on behalf of Lawrence Street? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Introduce yourself.
I'm David Foss.
Okay. You want to talk to us a little bit about what you're bringing to us?
Yeah, sure. Back in March, I purchased the lot off the City of Lowell. And to... When I did that, I put together a bid package. And with the bid package, I presented this dwelling that, you know, that I proposed to put on the lot. With that being said, they approved it, obviously, and I have a letter here from them I'd like to pass out.
Sure.
If I could.
Please.
Can I come through here?
Certainly, sir. regards to the purchase of the property owned on 682 Lawrence Street. You want to tell us a little bit about your project, sir?
Yes. So with the project, the reason being for the two-family is they just redid Lawrence Street with the sidewalks and the paving. The lot is ideal. It has the two driveway cutouts on each side. So there is no... Just for each driveway on the left and on the right. So there's no disturbing any curb cutting or disturbing any of that. The lot also has the two numbers, so it would be ideal for each dwelling. Well, it's one dwelling for each unit. And as you see in the picture, it's not just a plain two-family. It's got some detail to it. So I think it would enhance the neighborhood.
Is that all you have?
What's that?
Is that... Is that all you want to speak to?
Um...
Just fine. I just...
Okay, this is my first time.
Okay, no. We just like to know a little bit about the project, a little bit...
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm doing one on Chelmsford Street now. It did, again, qualify for the two-family, three-family. But, again, it wasn't a look for the neighborhood. So I kept it a single, just, you know, to make it for the neighborhood. I'm not about slapping in houses and just... I have a... I do nice stuff, and I take pride in what I do. So with that being said, I think it's a good fit for the lot.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, we'll bring it back up for any questions from the board members.
Okay, thank you.
This time, is anybody wishing to speak? On behalf of the petitioner or against the petitioner? Anyone in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is closed. We'll open it up to the board members for comments and questions to the petitioner. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions about the design of the structure. If I could just ask the petitioner a few questions. Thank you. So the two units, how many bedrooms per unit?
Three.
So each of them are going to have three. So is that on a second floor or...
Yes.
So there's three bedrooms on the third... On the second floor, okay.
Yes. The units are identical?
No, they look amazing.
Yeah.
Bay windows, fireplaces?
Beautiful. Well, actually, the fireplace, that would have bumped me over further.
It would.
So there are going to be fireplaces in the unit, but they're going to be power-vented. So you're actually not going to have those two brick... But, again, the front of the structure is going to be what you see. It's going to be a beautiful thing.
How much room do we have between the front... So the site plan, the plan that we have, doesn't show the bay windows, right? So just thinking that there's a five-foot dimension between the edge of the parking space and the foundation. Is that to the face of the bay window?
No, I'm... No, no. I'm going to try to... From what I think, there's some ledge back there. I'm not positive. But I want to... When the surveyor goes back out there, I want to try to push it back far as I can. So I do have... You know, I don't want the driveways up against the structure. That's just not a good look.
But we have open space requirement, so...
From the foundation to the driveway?
Well, Christine, maybe you could weigh in on this. If he tries to split the open space between the front yard and the backyard, is he actually going to lose out because you have the... Do we have a... Well, we have a dimensional change because the back of the lot gets wider, and the front of the lot will probably be...
So we refer to the section in the backyard usable open space, and then the open space in the front is considered landscape open space. So it's actually two separate requirements. So the usable open space in the back has to be 250 square feet per unit. So he has... He's required to have 500. So he has some wiggle room because he has about 840 showing on the plan now. And then the landscaped open space is no more than 50% of your front, between the front facade of the structure to the street. Only 50% of that can be paved. And so I do think he meets that because he does show some... Actually, he doesn't meet that. So he needs a variance for landscaped open space, no matter where the house moves.
So if the house moved back maybe eight feet or so, maybe... Maybe 10 feet? We're going to decrease the usable open space in the rear, and we're going to increase the landscape open space, but still not enough to satisfy zoning? Okay.
And that's just on quick mental math, looking at the plan here. So, you know, without actually seeing what the final site plan will be, it's hard to say.
Thank you. So in addition, on the site plan, we have, I think, a walkway right out of that front door.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there's two front doors. So we have, it looks like a stair and maybe a common walk to the...
Yes.
So we're going to lose a little bit of pavement surface there. All right. You don't have a landscape plan developed at this point?
No, I don't. But I kind of like what's in the picture. Would I just... They told me what I... I did what I thought I needed for this meeting.
Well, I think I'd like to, if I get agreement from my fellow board members, to make a condition that you work with the planning department to develop a landscape plan.
Absolutely.
That is satisfactory and also shows your intention with adjusting the building for ledge. You said there's ledge on the site?
I'm not sure. This is a rumor I heard way in the back. I don't know. It's... I... Again, I don't know.
And one more question, Christine, if we could. The width of the curb cut for the parking spaces is going to be 36 feet?
No, I... They're already out there now, and the engineer's office did them recently when they repaved Lawrence Street. So they made them... I'm not sure what the exact dimension is, but they didn't exceed the zoning requirement for that zoning district.
Okay.
So the existing curb cuts for the two driveways are compliant.
This looks like it's one driveway in the plan. So that's my confusion.
Yes, it does. So he doesn't show where it drives up.
Splits.
But it is... I mean, it's six-inch granite reveal, so from Lawrence Street, you would be going up and over if you were to pull right in front.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to have the existing curb cut that's currently there maintained with the new design, is what we're saying. All right, good. Three bedrooms, okay. I mean, I think that it's a great improvement, and I think it fits in well with the neighborhood. I like that it's two and a half stories. I like the articulation of the front of the facade with the bay windows and the porch for the entrances. I think it would be greatly enhanced to have something closer to the picture with landscaping, so I think that would be my only condition. I'd like to see if I can get some support from the rest of the board, but...
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the same sentiments that Member McCarthy does. My concern was landscaping in the front, and I would like to see if you could move it back, if you could, you know, try to fit it in. I understand it's a bit of a tight squeeze. You're not going to fit in the full 50% that's going to be required. I would probably, if Dennis had suggested eight feet, that would probably get you close to like... Based on my quick calculations, around 12, 13 feet, which would be close to the 50%, I think. But I would like, if that's something that you'd be agreeable to, and then a landscaping plan with... Working with the planning department and whatnot. One other thing I was curious about, did you have any elevation plans done for what you proposed here? Because it doesn't...
No.
It's a beautiful picture and everything, but I'd like to see like how the elevation...
Well, no, I did have the surveyor out there, and he did that site plan for me. I gave him everything you guys have. Next time he comes out there, then he's going to do everything.
Yeah, I mean, did the... Talk about the architectural elevations for the... For the house, for the proposed house, or what you're proposing here?
The elevation for the house? The height? I don't know.
Yeah, the height, and just to see, you know, kind of...
Well, about 40 feet high. I'm guessing about 40 feet high.
Normally, this is something that the board likes to see, to see like how high the property is going to be and...
Right. I mean, it's a pretty level lot, and, you know, obviously, I work on construction, and just from what I see, the two stories, I would say it's 40 feet. I don't have anything in writing for that, but obviously, whatever you need, I will produce it.
I mean, I guess if you can work with planning and development on that end as well, it's something. Otherwise, they're pretty much all my concerns. Dennis had covered those with the... Everything seems to be fine, but again...
Whatever I need to do to...
I would probably suggest and propose if we can just move it back, you know, move the property back eight feet, and then have a landscape plan for the front, especially, you know, with the idea of what you've got here, like with some of the trees and shrubs and stuff.
Obviously, I take pride in what I do, and I'm not going to make it look a showpiece like the one I'm doing now on Chelmsford Street.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to follow up on a couple of the things that have already been mentioned about the landscaping and the elevations. So I think we'll be, you know, adding a condition that the elevate... The final elevations would have to be submitted to the planning office, whatever the decision is tonight. But on the landscaping, there's a couple of things. One, I think our zoning code, is it three feet, Christine? The driveway can't be closer than three feet...
To the edge.
...to the house without another special permit or variance?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be something... I know you mentioned that you don't want the driveways to go right up to the house, and actually, they can't go right up to the house unless you, you know, come back to us and get a permit to do that. So I would definitely like to see that...
Okay.
That strip be green space in front of the house all the way along the driveways. It's... From the plan, it's difficult to tell based on the drawing and then the plan if you're going to separate the 682s, two driveway spaces, from 684s.
Yes.
So if you could explain that a little bit more.
Okay. Well, right now, the existing curb cut is... There's one on the left, and there's one on the right. Basically, I'm coming in on each side of the driveway, 18 feet, and then we're going to set the house back, like you said.
But I'm wondering, between the two...
On each side.
I was out at the site, so I noticed the curb cut. What I'm saying is I don't want the driveways to come in and then merge together and have it be one open...
No, no.
...section of asphalt. So what are you putting between the two spaces on the right and the two on the left?
Well, it is something nice, stone, grass, something that's going to make this thing pop. I think asphalt is ugly. I don't like it. I hate side yards all asphalt, but that's not going to happen here.
And I'd like to see if possible, and again, so I think another condition will end up being, you know, submitting a final landscape plan to the planning office, working with them and submitting a final plan. But the section right on the street between the two curb cuts, I'd like to see if possible that even that little area could be turned into some green space, like a little island on each side of the curb cut, so that it's against...
That was the plan, yeah.
That it's not all... And again, this will probably be the best-looking building in that entire square because most of them don't, at least from the front, don't have any green space. And there's a couple of, what I'm assuming are rental properties or absentee landlord situations where the buildings are kind of in rough condition. So yours will definitely help spruce up the neighborhood. But I would like to see, again, in addition to landscaping right in the front of the house, that little island that's between the two curb cuts maybe also work in some landscaping there, so...
Okay.
Okay. So again, that's something you can work with the planning office on, the final landscape plan, and also the elevation, so...
Right.
But other than that, I think... I remember that building was an incredible eyesore before it caught on fire and burned to the ground. But for many years, it was a... It was an eyesore, and then it was boarded up for a while, and then the fire. So I'm sure, you know, whatever you end up ultimately putting there is going to improve that area. And of course, the mill across the street is being renovated into condos or rental apartments, so... That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ben?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I agree with my colleagues. Mr. Foss seems very accommodating to the... To the request of the board, the condition for the landscape plan, along with plans for elevation, to work all the details with the planning office. So overall, I think, you know, this project would be good for the neighborhood and for the city. So I wish you the best of luck, Mr. Foss.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So you've heard from the board in regards to two... Two A, two separate conditions with a subcondition, if you will, as it relates to the curb cut. Are you okay with those conditions?
Absolutely, yes.
We're going to need a final elevation plan. We're going to need a landscape plan. And then to your landscape plan, we'll be looking for that green space on either side of the curb cut.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I did mention moving the property back if that's something, because to try to get in more space in the front. Actually, I just looked at the elevation, I looked at the breakdown. You only have 26.4 feet provided in the back, so you're required to have 20. So I would make a condition that it move back six feet.
Six feet.
If that's something that you'd...
Okay.
There'll be a third. Any other conditions? Board members?
Well, I think we should work with DP, with the planning department, and let them kind of develop that. It might... Developing this is sort of a balancing act, and so maybe conditioning the actual dimension might be a little harsh. I think we should probably leave it a little loose and let them kind of work through the balancing act. That's where it belongs, maybe.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, sorry, Mr. Chairman. The building to the right, behind that building, there's a... And to the side, there's a vacant lot, and it is, to the naked eye, a lot of ledge. It's being kind of used as a dumping ground right now, but the area that's overgrown with weeds, not...
Mm-hmm.
Not right next to your property, but on the other side from the... I think it's like a light blue multifamily. There's a parking area and then a vacant lot there. And I... It looks, again, to the naked eye, like there's a lot of ledge in that area, so it might end up coming into the back of your property. So I think I agree with Dennis that maybe we should, you know, we'll recommend the six feet if possible, but have... Having you work with the planning office to see if it's feasible to move it back that far, so...
Okay. Thank you. So in review, we have the three conditions, final elevations, landscape, and then setting back six feet, working with DBD.
Okay.
Any other comments or conditions? Or a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve ZB 2017-32, special permit and variance for David Foss for the property located at 682 to 684 Lawrence Street, for a special permit approval and request for relief under section 12.1. Special permit under section 12.1 and variance under section 5.1 for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, frontage, side yard setback, and for minimum setbacks from lot lines under 6.1.10, with the following three conditions. That the final structure elevations be submitted to the Department of Planning and Development, that a final landscape plan be submitted to the Department of Planning and Development, and to investigate the feasibility of moving the foundation back a suggested six feet if possible, also working with the planning office.
Give a second. A second motion. Rule call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Palia?
Approved with conditions.
Ms. Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCrake?
Approved with conditions.
Sir, it has been approved with conditions. We wish you the best of luck. Stay in touch with DBD.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, a new business, ZB 2017-34 for a special permit, GPG Vonham LLC at 557 Vonham Avenue. The applicant is seeking an amendment to a previously granted special permit for a property located at 557 Vonham Avenue. The amendment requests to increase the total number of units from 13 to 18 residential units with 31 parking spaces. The proposed project is located in suburban, single-family zoning district and requires an amendment to the special permit granted from the zoning board of appeals under section 4.5.2 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant seeks the amendment pursuant to section 4.5.2 and section 6.1.3 of the Lowell zoning ordinance and any other relief required. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Perrin. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Attorney Stephen Gearan. I represent GPG Vonham LLC in this petition for amendment to a special permit that was awarded to him back in November 2015. As you know, the applicant initially appeared before this board and was granted approval to change the pre-existing non-conforming nursing home located at 557 Vonham Avenue to a 13-unit multifamily permitted non-conforming use. The special permit was subsequently appealed in the Middlesex Superior Court, and as of June 30th of this year, the court has dismissed that appeal, leaving the ZBA's special permit in approval use unmodified in all manners and fully intact. In the preparation... Mr. Coats, in preparation to start the construction of this building for the approved use pursuant to sections 4.5.2 and 6.1.3, item 2, as the chairman referenced, the applicant is also seeking to add five apartments to the approved use, formally bringing the total approved unit count to 18, and four of which will be designated specifically for housing for the disabled. That is along with 31 parking spots. As of the 2015 special permit grant, the board approved amending the final count up and down, up or down, based upon the final parking count. However, in accordance with the city's law department recommendation, the applicant is formally submitting this amended request for special permit tonight. Just as a brief background, as you already know, we've been before this board many times for the last almost two years since it was approved, but for the extent of the changes in the final plans, for the petitioner's original plans, the majority of those plans entail renovating the interior of the building, and the exterior work is going to be limited, again, to the necessary roofing, siding repairs, landscape, beautification, new windows and new doors, basically all significant aesthetic improvements to the exterior. Nothing is going to change the footprint of that building. So the changes would be the total number on the site plan, the total number of parking is now up to 31 spaces, and the total unit count requested for the amendment is from 13 to 18, and as I said, four of those are for disabled individuals. So pursuant to 6.1.3, item 2, where it states that changes of use of a structure that does not conform to these parking requirements are permitted without being subject to these requirements, provided that the new use does not require more parking than the former use. We all are very familiar that the former use was a 101-bed nursing facility that involved multiple visits from doctors, clinicians, therapists, patients themselves, ambulances, visitors throughout the time that that facility was in use, which was for a very long time. It's very clear that my client's purpose to actually repurpose that building into residential use is consistent with this city's master plan and is something that is absolutely a less burdened use on that neighborhood than the prior use, which was the nursing home. We've showed in prior hearings, the traffic studies that we have again tonight, both from your traffic engineer here in the city, or our traffic engineer here in the city, and Mr. Coats' own traffic engineer. So as a matter of right, the approved use may comprise a maximum of the 18 units that he's proposing. So in conclusion, the approved use in conjunction with the... Already approved use in conjunction with the request to amend and add five apartments due to 2015 grant takes into account the surrounding neighborhood, the architectural heritage of that building and the area, the open space, the density, the height, and incorporates all of these into the design of that building. The project is anticipated to have an immediate noticeable positive impact on that Petacaville neighborhood, and your approval of this amended and final project plan is integral to reintroducing and repurposing this property into the Lowell economy, beautifying Petacaville, and bolstering neighborhood property values. I want Mr. Coats to hand out, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just some paperwork that we had submitted over the last hearings, and I'll address those, and Mr. Coats can address them more specifically.
Certainly.
But if you can... So in the first page from Principal Bell Law Firm in Boston dated May 22, 2017, addressed to the Civil Court of the Middlesex Superior Court, you will see the civil action that was filed, the Docket number, and you'll see, if you turn the page, that that was a stipulation of dismissal signed by the Mr. Coats attorney, the attorney for Louisa Vonham, and it was also on the third page, approved by the party, which was the city solicitor's office. So that matter has been dismissed. You may recall that we came before this board several times and sought continuances, and we had to do that because the city wasn't comfortable that the dismissal would actually we had to do that because the, the city wasn't comfortable that the dismissal would actually happen. So rather than continue to ask for continuance and frustrate anybody who's coming here to speak and having things not get done, we decided it would be more efficient and a better way to do it would be to wait till that was dismissed and then reapply, and that's what we've done. You will see on the second handout is the actual decision, the findings of fact, that was approved unanimously by this board back in November 2015, and you'll see the provision that allows for greater or lesser units based upon the parking. It was mentioned that one of the prior hearings, I'm not sure which hearing, and I think, I'm not sure, I think Mr. McCarthy had suggested, or somebody that tried to get more parking spots to 31, and that number is the maximum number that Mr. Coats could reach when he went back to his engineer and said, redo it and see what we can do. Woodbine Ave. is no longer part of this, as you know. There's also a memorandum of understanding, and this is between Varnum LLC and the company that's going to provide the disabled individuals for that house, for that housing project or for that residential development, and four of these units are going to be earmarked for these people who obviously don't drive, so that will have a positive impact on the traffic count. And just while I'm on that, so I don't forget, if, if you look at the following handouts that we have, that there's, it won't be needed, but there is sufficient and ample off-street, I'm sorry, on-street parking in that area that for years that the nursing home used and didn't have any real negative impact on that area, was just something that the neighborhood had become accustomed to. Mr. Coats does not anticipate having to use anything off, off-site at all, but it is there if he ever needs it, but I, I would just suggest to the board that that is just extra, that's not necessary and probably won't ever be used. So we have that memorandum, understand, so that's not just, you know, a thought that four disabled people are going to go there, they are going to go there. And then you'll see that you have a handout from UMass where about the fourth paragraph down, it says, "The live-in Lowell program is open to all benefits," and what that does is that's a program that UMass has that encourages its faculty to seek housing in Lowell near the, near the university, and as we stated at many of the hearings, this is going to be a relatively upscale development. Mr. Coats' total investment's going to exceed $2 million, so this is going to be a absolute beautiful facility for people who want to live there, professionals in that area, as well as the designated four people who are disabled. The next handout we have is some overhead bird's-eye view and then some street views of the area. This is as it was when it was a nursing home, and you can see, if you look at this, that there was substantial on-street parking utilized back then. And what this shows is clearly, and I don't think there's any remaining dispute, but clearly this use is a far less burdensome use to the property and consistent with 4.5.2 and also consistent with the parking requirement. So those are just illustrative of what it was before, and that won't be what it's like now, and it was okay then. After that, you'll see that the, from Whitman-Bingham, a traffic study that's followed up by a traffic study by this city's engineer, and you'll see that it says that it absolutely, the parking will have no negative impact at 18 units. Both the city's traffic engineer and Mr. Coats' private traffic engineer both stated that. So you can see on the second-to-last paragraph of the last page, it says, "It is therefore evident that conversion of the Glenwood Nursing Home into an 18-unit apartment building would not increase traffic generation." It's also important to note, I believe, that on a common sense level, when you have residential people living here and they work, they may not all work the same shifts, but there's only going to be 18 units, and because there's only 18 units in such a large building, some of those buildings are going to be quite large and with only a few people living there. Most of them are going to be high-end apartments or all of them, so the folks who live there are going to be leaving to go to work in the morning and coming back in the afternoon, and there won't be multiple trips during the day. Certainly on the weekends, when people are around, they might be running errands like we all do, but it's important to make that distinction that there are, it's a big building for only 18 units. It's not like he's squeezing in 18 units. He's capped at the 18 units because of the parking. Otherwise, the building could fit more than 18 units. So we're asking for the board to, to allow the approval of this amended petition and understand that Mr. Coats has, over the past two years, reached out many, many times to the neighbors here, as recently as a few months ago. He opened up his website to them, he's encouraged them to call him and ask questions, and gentlemen, this project is clearly a win for the city, it's clearly a win for the neighbors. The, I, I've never been able to understand the opposition to this project compared to what the use was before. Mr. Coats purchased this building, he has a right to develop this building, and he was upfront at every, every hearing that he was looking for the 18 units. The only moving target was the number of parking spots. So he has 31 parking spots, he can explain in more detail how that pretty much is sufficient parking, even if he doesn't have it as a matter of right, which he does. So would, I, I want Mr. Coats to address that directly now, if I could, and then we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
To the counsel.
Thank you for your patience. Mr. Coats?
Thank you, board, for hearing this matter again. For the record, my name is Said Coats. I'm a member of GPG Varnum LLC, which is the owner of the property located at 557 Varnum Avenue here in Lowell. The last page that you have in your packet, this kind of just gives a breakdown of the parking utilization, so we can better visualize what we're talking about and how the 31 spaces will be utilized. So the table at the top of the page, if this project was not exempt from the parking requirements, which are governed under 6.1.4, it would otherwise be required to have two spaces per unit. So for 18 units, that's 36 spaces, so that's very straightforward in the table. Down below, we now know that under 6.1.3, subsection number two, this project is afforded an exemption from 6.1.4, meaning that the parking requirements are not applicable and the project is as of right, as long as it's 18 units or less. And as Attorney Geary mentioned, we have a 22,000-square-foot building, and basically we're trying to fill that building without making the building envelope change, height differences, the building is going to stay exactly as it is from an architectural standpoint. None of the exterior walls will be changed, the footprint of the building will be exactly what it has been for the last 40 to 50 years. The site plan adds more parking, that's how we get to the 31 spaces, and looking at that bottom table, we see that, as Attorney Geary mentioned, there are four units that are going to be dedicated for servicing disabled Lowell residents. Those four units are going to have a one-to-one parking ratio. There'll be two paratransit vans, and then there'll be two employees that will live on-site. There'll be employees of a nonprofit that my company will be partnering with, they'll live on-site in an adjoining unit to the disabled clients, and they'll be servicing those residents on a full-time, 24/7 basis. The state, the Commonwealth, has already allocated the funds and the budget for fiscal year 2018, which started last month, so this program is funded, fully funded, and the nonprofit partner is just waiting for the approval and for us to start the project and complete it. Those residents have already been identified. There is a window of opportunity, obviously, where if the project does not get started in a certain timeframe, those residents will be at risk of not being able to move in to this project, so we are trying to hit a timeframe at this point, a certain window of opportunity. So just going back to the table, those are the four units that are going to be for disabled residents. The other 14 units are up above. The two bedrooms, these are all market rate units, by the way, no affordable units. The two bedrooms are going to have a two-to-one parking ratio, as would be otherwise normally The one bedrooms are effectively going to have a 1.91 parking ratio. What that translates to is one parking space short of what would otherwise be expected if this project was not exempt from the parking regulations. So when we think of the context of 6.1.3, the really only difference, the only difference here is that there's one parking space that would otherwise be expected, but given that the project has afforded that exemption as, as of right, I can go up to 18 units with the project, and then we're just still expecting that we'll be able to service all parking needs on the parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward with the public hearing, Attorney Geary, you have anything further before we move on?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions after the public hearing. Oh, I do, I do want to, I did talk to Ms. McCall about it at the end, we, we need to keep in mind that we need to amend the, this board needs, should amend the site plan because the old site plan had Woodbine Ave. on it, this site plan, as you know, does not, so I just wanted to touch on that.
You'll, you'll go with that, Christine? You understand? Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the, opening up to the public, anyone in favor, wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Good evening. My name is John Hamblit. My address is 495 Varnum Avenue. I've been advised by council to put on the record that I am in front of you as an abutter. Normally I appear in front of you as co-chair of Pottuckyville Citizens Council. Those concerns will be addressed by Deb Forgione. There are several concerns I have about the project. They generally fall into two categories, legal and practical, and I am not an attorney. I can read, but not necessarily always interpret. I know that typically with a land use board, if a project comes in front of you with substantial changes, the land use board makes a decision whether those changes are substantial, and if they are, a new application is required. That procedure was not followed in this case. It's my understanding, and talking with Christine O'Connor this morning and this afternoon, that it was determined that the changes were required, that the changes were substantial. It was agreed by the law department and DPD, but that they would give notice to abutters and in the newspaper, and that would meet some requirement. I don't agree, and I am asking this zoning board to refer this particular question back to the law department for their consideration. The second question I have is the time limits that are found in 4.5.2 and the time limits in 6.1.3, number two. Mr. Geary's letter to the zoning board of September 26th, 2016, states that the property has been vacant since March 2014. I'm going to have several handouts, and I'm going to pass them out one at a time as, as I'm talking about them. The first handout is a letter from Mayor Ed Kennedy to Christine O'Connor on November 3rd, 2016. Mayor Kennedy questions the loss of protected status under 4.5.6, and also, the letter includes the wording for the three-year limit on the protected status in 6.1.3, number two, if I may. Again, I would, the, the two areas are highlighted in yellow highlighter. The property has been vacant or unoccupied for more than three years, and it has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years are the two that are highlighted, and so as a second request, I would ask for clarification from the City of Lowell Law Department on whether or not the relief granted on these two zoning regulations applies or whether it has expired. As Mr. Geary's letter states, on July 14th of this year, "As part of the 2015 special permit grant, the board approved amending the final count up or down based on the final parking count." I think everybody's reading. Should I go ahead? What do you say?
Any board members ready to move on narrative? Go forward, sir.
My next observation is that, from Mr. Geary's letter, and, and this was, was always unclear to me, that in actuality in November 2015, while 13 units were approved, it also approved amending the final unit up or down based on the final parking count, and I'm perfectly fine with that. The existing parking count is 39, the approved number of units would be 15, they would all have to be one- or two-bedroom, with the exception of one, it could be a three-bedroom, because the rules are that you have to have two parking spaces for every apartment or .75 spaces for each bedroom. The third point I would like to make, if I may hand out something else. So this is just a copy of our zoning code, everybody's familiar with it, 6.1.4, table of parking requirements, and in reviewing this today, I noticed something I've never noticed before, and that's the notes column. The notes column that applies to this says, "Plus two spaces for each curb cut above one per 10 dwelling units." So whether we are talking about 12, 13, 15, or 18 units, this project qualifies for two curb cuts. However, this project has four curb cuts, and therefore, the applicant must either have four additional off-street parking spaces or must have two less units. If we reduce the number of units, we're now from 15 down to 13. I strongly disagree with Mr. Geary's statement that there is ample parking. I strongly disagree with Mr. Geary's statement that there is ample parking. And that map I've given you, the red indicates where there is no parking. Things have changed substantially since the nursing home was there. The first and the obvious is Woodbine Avenue is no longer available for parking. The second is that bike lanes were put in on both sides of Varnum Avenue, and there is no parking on either side of Varnum Avenue. Metaview Drive, the applicant has already agreed there would not be parking there, although with all the new additional parking spaces, I think there is only one space there. The neighborhood on Cedar Lane is concerned about the overflow with insufficient parking, and it is likely they will apply for and receive a neighborhood parking permit program. Because the unit is on Varnum Avenue and not Cedar Lane, occupants will not qualify for one of those permits. Daisy Lane across the street is a narrow private way, and that pretty much sums up what off-street parking is available. The Lowell zoning regulation six point one, and there are quite a few sections to it, is dedicated to the prohibition of on-street parking. And therefore, it's clear that all proposed vehicles, permanent or visitors, must be located in an off-street lot. From a practical matter, and I would like to remind you that this is Pawtucketville, not downtown Lowell, we do not have on-street parking. We do not have parking garages. We do not have any parking lots. What you see on the property is what you get for parking. Everybody in Pawtucketville has a car, and there's a good reason for that. We can't walk to Market Basket. We don't walk to the bank. It is not a walk-friendly environment. We don't have sidewalks in many parts of Pawtucketville. So in making considerations for whether there is substantial or enough parking, I would like you to remember that we are not in downtown Lowell. And lastly, I strongly support the program for handicapped individuals. I would like to point out that it's only a memorandum of understanding, and that is not a legal binding document. Before any decisions were made based on a handicap program, I would like to see something along the lines of a deed restriction. Also, Mr. Geary made a statement that obviously they don't drive. It is against the law in Massachusetts to discriminate against someone who has mobility issues, and you can drive if you are paraplegic or quadriplegic with adaptive driving devices. In addition, I don't believe you can consider these four units in any sacrifice of parking spaces, as that would be a violation of Federal Americans with Disability Act regulations. There are also regulations in Massachusetts that limit parking for facilities that specialize These regulations were developed as a joint effort between Americans with Disability Act attorneys and the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. And the part that's highlighted is clear that facilities specializing in treatment or services for people with mobility impairment, twenty percent of the total spaces should be accessible. So it raises the question whether there should be six handicapped spots, according to Massachusetts And on a personal note, for the last two months, I have been a caregiver to a senior parent, and my parking lot is never empty. There is always the car to a health aide there, a physical therapist, a nurse, or an occupational therapist. If you are welcoming the handicapped, you need to be able to provide spaces for those people to provide the care for those individuals. And last but not least, there was a comment made once, "I was glad to see so many single bedroom units." I own two cars, and my partner owns two cars. If we took a single-bedded unit, I'm going to take four parking spaces. The law is the law. It's two parking spaces per unit, whether it's single or double, triple, it's more. So given my questions about the elimination of relief provided by four point five point six, six point one point three, number two, my questions about whether this hearing is actually appropriate and legal, the existing provision in the special permit that was issued in November two thousand fifteen to move the unit count up or down based on the number of parking spaces, the four additional parking spaces now required for the required curb cuts or a reduction in two dwelling units, a different need for cars in suburbia or suburban Lowell, the legal requirement opposed by the mass disability laws, according to my calculations, I believe twelve units is the maximum this parking plan will hold. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Deb Forgione, Pawtucketville Citizen Council, I'm the chairman. Okay, so we haven't had a meeting over the amendment. On a personal note, it's very difficult to have followed this whole process. Most recently, we, I think it was in May, there was a new application, and it was withdrawn. And then we waited for it to come back, and now it's coming back as an amendment. And then when I pulled the application, it says "application," but then handwritten, it says "amendment." So for us to come before you, the public, I'm confused on, is this a new application or an amendment? Because the application says "application," but handwritten amendment.
Christine, can you clarify? As it relates to the application, with the handwritten notation as the amendment?
New application. There was notice to abutters and in the paper.
But it says on the agenda amendment, so...
I'll refer it to the Law Department.
Yeah, I think that that's going to help us, because, you know, when you're coming before you, am I speaking out against an application, which would be a whole new set of plans, or am I doing an amendment? Because with the plan that we're actually looking at, that I'm going to speak on, this was back in November, so was this part of the application? Because this wasn't what we were here for when they were talking about Woodbine Avenue. And so it says amendment, which would be the original application that had Woodbine, but with an amendment, I have a whole new plan. So it's for us to come up here and just say, well, we're against it. We don't know if we're against an application or amendment, and I'm not here so much to say I'm against. It's more, you're looking for feedback from the neighborhood. You're looking for feedback for a project coming into the neighborhood. And just from what we could review about this plan, if this is the plan that everyone's looking at as far as a new application or amendment, but there's two issues on the plan that we looked at is, do you have a copy? So when I speak, you'll be able to follow along? Okay. Can you look where the snow storage is? Okay, so look at the snow storage. There are no dimensions. And it says "snow storage," yet to get to it are two parking spaces. So no dump truck, no plow can put the snow in the snow storage area. So those two parking spaces wouldn't be able to be there. So, or I don't know how many parking spaces that you'd be dealing with now, because you can't get to snow storage, plus is that, you don't know if it's adequate snow storage, because there's just dash lines. So there's the question about if that, you can use those two spaces. And also, it says "proposed dumpster." Well, there's no dimensions for that either, and we all know that it has to be fenced in. That's the new regulations for dumpsters. And then if you see the plan, there's no dimensions for that driveway to see how much room someone has to go get that dumpster. And then it's also, one of the things that you can look at is where the handicap spots are, which John mentioned, that's not enough handicap parking. If you have four apartments of handicap, you can't not have a space for them. And he did mention that there will be employees there working every day, taking care of the people that are in those apartments. So they're already taking up parking for the other units, and now you've got inadequate for the handicap. And then there's another section right in here. It's kind of hard. It's, there's a parking space alongside the building, and it says "two spaces," but if you're parking there, there's no way you can get into the two spaces across the way. So this isn't, this is like a drawing, but they're not definitive measurements for you to make an accurate decision whether or not that's adequate parking, because there's no dimensions. There's no dimensions for the dumpster snow removal. There's two parking spaces in front of this, where you're going to put the snow storage. And then you don't have enough handicap parking spaces. And then the area where there's two more spaces, it doesn't look like the other cars can actually back out. So that's, you know, when you're saying, well, from a neighborhood point of view, we were looking at, okay, so how does it affect the neighborhood, which is, clearly looks inadequate parking turnaround to get the truck, to get the trash. And then that snow removal, it's a proposed snow removal, but there's no dimensions. But then there's going to be a fence all along the way there, so it looks like that section of the snow removal from the entire project will be right behind Angelina's house. So how high would that be? Because it is higher than the house that abuts it. So the dimensions and the elevations, if you don't know them, you really can't say with confidence that those parking spaces would be valid once this project's got started. So with that said, that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Reedy. I'm here with my wife, Donna. I've been the property owner of eight Metaview Drive since nineteen sixty, in other words, when it was first built. Over the years, we've had, of course, issues with the parking of the nursing home there. There's been no parking signs put up, and during the course of years, they've been taken down by people that wanted to park there, because they did not like parking in the small area that surrounds the establishment there. And it's always been an issue that they're on the street parking when it's supposed to be no parking. The lady there mentioned about snow removal. In the rear of that facilities, they always piled the snow on my property. My mother had the property before I did, and she asked me to put pine trees up. If you go up there today, you'll see pine trees, hoping that that'd be a deterrent. Not at all. Matter of fact, as the pine trees grew, a lot of the residents there, or the people that were working in the nursing home, liked the shade of the pine trees, so it actually made them want to park there even more. Now, I also had to mow the lawn all the time up there, and I worked Monday through Friday, so I could only do it on a Saturday. And wouldn't you know, they're all parked along that lawn where I cannot mow it. It's always been an issue. Getting to, getting out on Metaview Drive, you're going to have a real safety problem when people try to come out of Metaview Drive from those units on to Varnum Avenue. There's been several accidents there. Matter of fact, my fence has been hit right on the corner of that street. And to me, I can understand, there's a piece of property there that should be utilized, and I do applaud it for being going forward as far as being used, but I don't see the reasoning of overloading the area with more congestion. The learned lawyer here brought up the fact that most of these people will be working during the day, and my concern is, they'll be home at night, and they'll probably have people over visiting them, which means it's going to be a little crowded. And they'll probably have a few parties, whether it be birthday parties or holiday parties and such and such. And it's already a busy area as far as that is concerned, as far as traffic is concerned. You know, I'm not much of a public speaker. I have to applaud these people that have really worked hard on coming up with a lot of statistics, but I see nothing more than an overloaded of a property that was once not so bad. I mean, we didn't mind the nursing home so much. Sure, we did mind the parking off-street. I think one of the biggest problems there is, when they probably stipulated these parking spots, I don't know if you've gone shopping lately, but it seems like the parking spots are very narrow. They squeezed them in so much that I would not want to park there, because I'm sure I'd be getting all dense in my car. Even when you go to the supermarket, at least the handicap spots are much wider, so that people can get out. And I do have to applaud these people for putting in a few handicap facilities. But what I see is nothing more than a real hassle when it comes during the evenings now. The nursing home wasn't that bad, because, I don't know how many of you people have visited a nursing home, there's usually in most areas, a lot of parking space, because that's the way it should be. But none of them were ever filled, because a lot of people only go visiting their relatives in the nursing home normally on the weekends, when they can. And that was when we had the biggest problems, on the weekends. Now again, most of these people that we, in these residents, yeah, they'll be working all week, but on the weekends, they're going to be totally full and probably have company over. I just do not see how this is going to actually work in a residential area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Counselor would care to?
Just like to, Mr. Chairman, just to address a couple of issues legally, then my client wants to address the issues specifically to the plan. But tonight's the hearing. The Law Department has commented previously on this project. They haven't had any comments on this, certainly no negative comments on this for tonight. The time standards would be stayed naturally while there's an appeal going on or while this procedural process is in motion. So I think to go back and say that is, it's not very credible. The, it meets all the time standards. Everything was done properly. The intent for Mr. Coats was to do things not only properly, legally, and thoroughly, without any problem from the very beginning. He has fully disclosed everything he's tried to involve, the community, the Patuckeville Neighborhood Association. He's gone to the meetings. He's tried to engage them in, in, to give them information as to exactly what he's doing. So these issues that were brought up are something that Mr. Coats does not agree with. And he thinks that he's rightfully before this board and that this board can make this decision tonight. As for all the talk about handouts and with, with ADA issues, Mr. Coats is going to be ADA compliant. I mean, that's the end of the story. He'll be ADA compliant. If they say you need that many spots, which I don't think they're going to say, then he will. But he's ADA compliant now. I think that's, that would be a condition and even if it isn't, he has to be. So I don't think that that's a, a big issue. And as far as the gentleman who just spoke, you know, he lives right there, so he certainly has information about how that area has worked over the last decade, several decades. And he said the nursing home, you know, wasn't that bad. And we know from prior hearings and we know from our traffic studies, that this proposed project is a far less burdensome project than that nursing home was, just as it is. So if he liked the nursing home, they're going to love this. And, and to say that, you know, people gather on weekends, well, that's no different than somebody on Meadowview or Varnum Ave. with a driveway with two spots, having people over on the weekends. People do come over on weekends, and that's what people are supposed to do. That's why it's a community. That's why it's, that's why people love Patuckeville. You know, it's, it's an area where people gather, people like any other place. It's residential units. People go there to meet other people, just like at their own private residences. It's going to be no different. And there's plenty of parking. He doesn't anticipate having to use any of the on-street parking at all. And if there's no parking signs, then the city enforces those. We all know that. They tow. And if those signs are up there, there won't be anybody parking there. So I'd ask you to consider that, and I'd like Mr. Coats to specifically address the issues with the snow removal and the parking and the suggestion that there wasn't enough parking based upon those thoughts. So, Mr. Coats?
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Coats?
Thank you, Board. So I'll just quickly, just run down a list of some of the concerns that have been raised tonight. So, and with respect to following proper procedure, so I think that we've traveled a long road to get to this point. I think that the Law Department has given input on numerous occasions. They've issued multiple legal opinions. They've been a party to the stipulation of dismissal that you have before you. That assertion, that statement, that proper procedure was not followed, is not founded in any fact. The matter went before the Superior Court. The approval was upheld, unmodified in any fashion. It was not modified in any fashion. So again, the fact that someone is raising concern that somehow the board, the city, or myself are not following proper procedure, I think that's completely unfounded in any fact. And I think it's a false narrative. The concern whether or not the timeframe was violated, again, the city's Law Department has not issued any legal opinion to date. We've been in communication with the Law Department. I myself have even sat down with high-level people in City Hall to make sure that there were not any concerns as we move forward with this project. No concerns were raised to me. And the fact that someone else is bringing up questions, again, it's not founded in any fact. And I appreciate the concern, but I just want to restate that it's not founded in any fact. We followed proper procedure and we've had the Law Department's input all of the way through. Mr. Hamlet mentioned that there are 39 spaces. I believe he inadvertently misspoke, but there are 31 spaces. He mentioned that they should yield 15 units with one and two bedrooms, with maybe one three-bedroom. We've already discussed the fact that all of that might be correct under 6.1.4, the city's parking requirements. But we've also discussed that 6.1.4 is not applicable because this project is afforded an exemption under 6.1.3, subsection number two. So again, the parking narrative is not applicable, especially with respect to limiting the units to 15 units. Under 6.1.3, what is a fact and what is a legal basis is that the project is allowed to go up to 18 units as of right. Also, there was a concern that the notes section in 6.1.4 required additional parking because of the curb cuts. Again, 6.1.4 is not applicable. There were multiple concerns raised about on-street parking, the potential for some of the neighbors to try to get parking permits, permits instituted in the neighborhood. There was talk of there being no sidewalks, but there are actually sidewalks in Varnum Ave. for the record. There's also a bus line that stops directly in front of the building. Mr. Hamlet is correct. The project is not in downtown Lowell, but I think we're all well aware of that. The on-street parking concern, again, is not applicable. I think we stated our intentions very clearly to avoid on-street parking. I think we've stated very clearly the number of parking spaces, how those parking spaces will be utilized. There was concern about visitors on the weekends or at any time of the day. A lot of thought obviously went into the city zoning ordinances and the parking requirements. Those parking requirements account for visitor parking. So that's already factored into the project and into the zoning ordinances. Just to piggyback on what Attorney Gary has mentioned, with respect to ADA compliance, this project, the site plan, the site plan was designed by Merrimack Engineering. Steve Stupinski is a professional engineer with 30-plus years' experience. He is the individual that designed the site plan and stamped it. The site plan has been reviewed by the then-current transportation engineer, Nicholas Bosonetto. He also issued an independent traffic and parking study, which corroborated the fact that this is a less burdensome use and raised no concerns about traffic or parking. In fact, the study was quite favorable for the project. In addition to that, the then-current city engineer, Lisa DiMeo, also reviewed the plans and approved them. Now that Nicholas Bosonetto is the city's engineer, he has once again reviewed the most recent plans and has approved them with zero concerns. So these plans have been designed by professionals and reviewed by professionals. And no concerns were raised. Also Gavin and Sullivan, they are the architects for this project. They are well aware of ADA compliance, as well as the host of other regulations and ordinances that this project will need to adhere to. They are professionals and they are working to ensure that every ordinance, whether it be ADA compliance or otherwise, will be adhered to. Mr. Hamlet was also mentioning folks with disabilities. Clearly, we're not discriminating against anyone with disabilities. I think we made it very clear that there'll be a paratransit ban to handle the transportation of the people with disabilities. And what I did not disclose is that these individuals are part of an acquired brain injury program, which means that these are going to be former veterans, in some cases, that have acquired brain injuries on, while fighting on our behalf, okay, in wartime. These are also going to be individuals that have suffered accidents where they were once a functioning individual, and now they have some sort of acquired brain injury, which does prevent them from driving. So this is a very specific program. I, I've been using the term disabilities very generally, but just to give you that additional context, these folks have acquired brain injuries and they'll be transported with a paratransit ban. With respect to the concern of the employees taking up parking from the other units, I think I already mentioned that there will be two individuals, one individual per apartment that will be caring for these folks 24/7. So the idea that there'll be all of this additional activity is unfounded. There'll be an individual onsite 24/7, living and caring for these folks. That's already factored into the parking. We discussed that when we looked at the parking utilization table. With respect to the concern about the difficulty of following the process, I think Christine could probably attest to this. She's fielded many questions. Some of them were forwarded to me so I can provide answers or clarification is needed. So I can understand if someone doesn't do this as their line of business, but I have personally made myself available. As of late June through early July, I traded emails with the chairs, the co-chairs of the Patuckeville Citizens Council. I explicitly asked them if they had any concerns. I sent them the latest plans for the project. I sent them the project website, which went live this summer, 557varnum.com. I received z- almost zero feedback. My offer to engage them in different forms, whether it be through email, in-person conversations, I've been snubbed many times. And my sole objective was to, number one, answer questions and also with the intent of avoiding a public hearing that turns into something that it shouldn't be. And so I tried my best to provide as many answers as I could and to try to engage as many people as I could. And whether or not people took advantage of that opportunity, that's up to them. But whether or not someone is concerned with the process, I'm available at any time. Some folks even have my cellphone number. I'm sure Christine is available. With respect to the question of whether or not this is an amendment or an application, it's clearly an application. On July 14th, I submitted an application, just like everyone else that's required to come before the board is required to do. It's a new application requesting an amendment for five additional units. With respect to the snow storage, again, I, I think I've kind of beat it to death, but that site plan has a scale on it. So not every dimension will be denoted on the plans, but in the bottom right-hand corner, there is a scale. And so again, I can understand if folks aren't used to looking at site plans, but all the dimensions are there. These site plans have been professionally designed and professionally reviewed, including by the city. So I think I've beat that one enough. With respect to snow being placed on any of the neighbor's property, what happened before the tenure of the current ownership, I can't do anything about that, nor was I party to any of that, any activity. What I can say to you with 100% certainty is that since GPG Varnum has owned this property from September 4th, 2014 to present day, I'm not aware of any snow being placed on anyone else's parcel except for 557 Varnum Avenue. With respect to safety concerns of vehicles pulling out onto Varnum Avenue from Meadowview Drive, I agree with the safety concern. I don't know if this is the right forum to address that. I think that that should be brought to the transportation engineer as a concern. There are probably various traffic concerns around the city. And so I think there's a process to hear those concerns. But I don't think that it's applicable to this project, the consideration of this project. I think that it was an issue before. And I've pulled out onto Varnum Ave. plenty of times, and I understand what people are talking about. But again, it does not invalidate the merits of this project. With respect to overloading the area and concerns of congestion, parties, the good thing is that, once this project is completed, the same gentleman before you will be active in the management of this property. So these are not condos for sale where I'm going to build it and go off into the sunset. The current ownership will retain control of the asset and proper property management will be in place. The assertion that the nursing home never filled up the parking spaces, I think the pictures that I gave you tell a different story. I just want to remind the board that in the process of designing this project, I personally knocked on doors and spoke to nearly 100 of the closest neighbors to this property. So I've heard a lot of concerns, the placement of the dumpsters, trash going into Barbara's backyard. I've heard a plethora of concerns. Those conversations have been factored into the plans before you. As I mentioned before, in November 2015, I'll continue with the same process, so I'm available to anyone that has concerns. My only interest is in actionable solutions and getting it before my team so that we can remedy anything that may be a concern for the neighborhood. So with respect to the parking, again, that's all going to be contained in the parcel. And I'll also add and remind the board that back in November 2015, I don't have copies on me, but those neighbors that I actually spoke with, they signed petitions. It's on the record from the November 2015 hearing. Over 70% of those neighbors were in favor of this project. I believe the exact number was 74%. And if you like Christine, I'll get a copy. I can send a soft copy to you tomorrow, just so we have it on the record for this hearing because I think it will be important. So that's all I have available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coats. Moving on to the board for discussion. Open it up, Dennis.
Mr. Chair, can I just add one comment as far as the procedure?
Public hearing has been closed.
Okay. Because I have a letter from Christine saying the Law Department has not reviewed this.
Again, the public hearing has been closed. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Maybe Christine could confirm that.
Once again, thank you. Public hearing has been closed. We'll be moving on to the board for comments and concerns. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a couple of questions if I could. But before I do, I just want to say that I really look forward to this project happening someday. Boy, oh, boy. It's been waiting to be redeveloped and it's a prime target for some nice upscale residential. I do have a problem with the application, specifically parking. So I'd like to refer to a couple of things here. Your site plan doesn't indicate grading. And if you go to the GIS portion of the city's website for the site, it shows a 10-foot grade change between the street at the rear of the site to the finished floor elevation, which indicates to me something in the neighborhood of a 7% slope maybe on that back parking area? Well, there's also an elevation that you submitted that is the rear elevation that shows that grade, which I don't think has been updated. At least it doesn't seem to be updated to show the attitude of new parking off the street side and the dumpster location. But that being said, you indicate on your site plan five spaces that seem to be problematic, two of which are handicapped accessible. I like the fact that you took the handicapped spaces that were previously there up against the building, constraining that drive-through to get to the dumpster, and you slid them up against the unit, I think it's unit four. However, that puts them on a slope that's greater than 2%, which is required for ADA accessibility, so it doesn't work. So that location would need to be... I don't know what, I don't know how you would solve that, because you can't claim to have accessible entrances and parking if you don't show it on your plan. And that clearly is a slope issue that I don't see how you can solve. I was hoping I could come up with an answer. I could tell you what it is, but I really am racking my brains on that one. So you don't have accessible parking at the moment. And, you know, my point is that the two spaces that kind of stick into that curved section, they're undersized, they're really tight, they're only eight by 16. So they're tight, narrow, and they're too short to be ADA, so you can't take those. And those are even problematic, because in order to take, move your car from those spaces, you basically have to back down the driveway because your drive aisle is only 20 feet wide, which, yes, some people could probably negotiate a 17-point turn, but that's really not all that realistic. So you're backing down a steep slope in the wintertime that's 150 feet long. Not easy. Then you have the single parking space that's on the angle there. That, again, is going to be a tricky scenario to do a seven-point turn maybe. It's doable, that one's less problematic, but those five spaces present issues to me as far as really being able to say that we've got five spaces. Those five are compromised, especially the ADA ones. Those are more of a deal breaker for me, saying that you've met the requirements, and I can't see how you do. But again, you did not present a grading plan that proves that out. The dumpster is right up against that unit... I don't know what the number is. I think I wrote that on my notes. So I know in the previous plan, we looked at it being out where the snow storage is, but now it's slid up against that unit really close to the living room window. I think it's right up against the living room. I think if you open the gate, you're swinging the gate up against the living room window, which doesn't seem like the right answer to me. I think when you finally build this, you're going to have that dumpster somewhere else or you're reconfiguring that unit. The other thing I noticed, the plans haven't been updated, the elevations. So you show in the elevations these decks for unit two, three, and four that are not there anymore. In fact, you have a nine- or 10-foot-high retaining wall up against some of those units, three and four especially, that's three feet from the building, that probably has a guard or a fence that protects people from falling over it. That's going to make that whole elevation of that retaining wall and fence 12 feet. And I think that's not depicted in the elevations, and we don't have landscaping to support how you're addressing that. And that just seems like we really made that parking make sense and we got that parking in, but it really compromised the aesthetic of the building on that side and those units. And that's not coming across in the documents that you submitted. The last one is that there's four new parking spaces that are pulled in off the access drive-off Meadowview. Those are going up the steep grade again, and those are only eight feet wide. So we're negotiating a steep grade that's 7% maybe, and you gave them the narrowest dimension, and so if that's a pickup truck, they won't work. Or that guy next to you in the pickup truck is going to have a dent in his door. I'm glad you got the parking spaces in. I just think we need a grading plan that's thoughtful, that identifies how these issues are solved. And I'd like to see a floor plan that is reflective of the new parking layout, that identifies that we don't have decks in these units and these retaining walls and these... And maybe even a landscape plan that supports how you're going to make that 10-foot retaining wall and that three-foot fence actually look nice. I like the project. I want to see something happen here. I really think it's a great idea, but you still have some work to do. And I have a hard time seeing this as something I want to see move forward without seeing the answers, particularly where you made such a big case out of the ADA compliant scenario. You don't have that. You haven't met it here, at least from what you presented. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman, to Christine. Christine, a quick question. So this board had already previously granted relief to Mr. Coats back in 2015. If the board does not accept Mr. Coats' amendment, does that affect anything with regards to the prior relief that was granted to him?
The previous decision includes exclusive... The plan that was with the previous decision includes exclusive parking on Woodbine Avenue. That is no longer applicable per opinion issued by the Law Department.
Okay, but as far as the non-conforming use, I believe we've already addressed that in our prior...
So that would stay intact.
That would stay intact, but the parking is the, it would be the only issue. Okay, that was one of my main, one of my main concerns. I mean, it seems to me that the only thing we're dealing with here is the parking and Mr. Coats has done, I think, gone bend over backwards to try to accommodate and do whatever you can to see this project go forward, and I commend you on that. Done a really good job. And I understand the concerns of the neighborhood. I understand the concerns of the neighborhood associations, quite frankly. I want to see this project get off the ground as well. And this thing has been boarded up, it's been sitting there, dilapidated, it just... And I'm sure you're losing money every single day with just having it sit there. I haven't heard one thing from anybody in the neighborhood or any of the neighborhood association as to what they believe should happen to the property. I think this is a great project, and I think this is what should happen. The parking, when I say you've gone bend over backwards, I mean, going through all these programs with members who have disabilities and stuff like that, with, you try to partner with UMS Lowell, I think that's phenomenal, what we've tried to do with this. I don't see that there's any issue with these, with the parking. I mean, there's concerns here, I'm sure the neighbor's concerned, the neighbor's concerned, but I've always thought this was a great project from the get-go. And I still think it's a great project, and I'm looking forward to finally seeing this go forward and get it off the ground. So that's, those are my comments. I will enlist the rest of the board members, but I think, I think we should finally get this thing moving forward, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to follow up on a couple of things that the other members mentioned. I agree with, or I disagree with what Dennis was questioning in regard to the parking. As far as I know, both in memos we've received from multiple city departments, including the traffic engineer, who's now the acting, I think, acting city engineer, that they approve of the plans, which, the last plan I have is dated December 29th, 2016. Is that the latest site plan? That is, yes. It is, okay, that's what I thought. So, so besides everything else that's been said, I'm just going to say I'm in favor of the, of tonight's petition. I think it's a existing non-conforming use that is less detrimental than the previous non-conforming use. You're asking for a special permit for five, basically for five parking spaces or variants. I am concerned that for the second time, and this is no reflection on the application, but maybe this will be directed to Christine, that, you know, the letter that we were handed tonight, the only people that weren't copied on the mayor's petition, we don't have a response. This is the original request from a motion, but it was copied to the mayor, city council, head of DPD. I don't think the applicant was copied on it, and then two members of the citizens' council. So it's a rather lengthy request for a review from the law office, and we don't have a copy of the review, and we don't, we were never, I guess, a party to the request. And maybe we don't need to be, which is fine, but the fact that a citizen spoke earlier and presented it to us and it was never shared, at least it wasn't shared with me as a member of the board, whereas the previous time that the law office was involved, we did receive a copy of the... Actually, we had a decision from the law office that said it was okay to consider one of the petitions as just an administrative matter. And then that was overturned by the same law office that I think told us it was okay to go ahead with that vote. And again, we're going back on three, close to three years of conversations on this matter. So I don't know if that's a procedural thing, that with this council motion and letter from the mayor that we were, you know, maybe intentionally left out of the loop, or that we just weren't required to be notified that new legal questions had arisen? I don't know if you can speak to that.
Maybe, if I recall, November, when we did administrative review on this, we subsequently got a decision from the Law Department that said that we had to vacate that decision. I think, it appears to me that this is dated the same, around the same time, and it's probably the reaction to what we had already previously done, which was, we had the administrative review, we ruled, we got the decision from the Law Department saying you have to vacate that, and we did immediately do that. So I think that's what this is.
I agree. I think that is in response to that, but I guess the fact that this required another response from maybe the planning office and/or the Law Department, and we weren't, at least I wasn't as a member of the board, given any update on these legal matters, which as a, as a citizen and volunteer on a, on a, you know, public board, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a architect, or, so I'm here as a volunteer, trying to hear both sides and taking the advice that we get from the city to make the decisions. And when we don't, we get information either after the fact or handed to us by a citizen. And again, I'm just, maybe just wondering out loud if there's a reason why we did or did not sort of get an update on any new requests, because this letter's dated in December, and there must have been a response from the Law Department, which would maybe affect how we voted on a petition, so.
I think you might be right, but short of going back and looking through all of the files, I can't say for certain why or if or not that you didn't receive it. I apologize if you haven't received it, and that's shocking, but I would have to go back and look and talk to the Law Department and sort of try to figure out a timeline of what was sent and when. I can't answer that now.
Yeah, and I don't need it to make the decision tonight. It's going forward. I have a feeling we'll be revisiting this petition fairly soon. But just going back to my opening, I'm in favor of the petition. I'm in favor of granting the special permits or special permanent variants for the reduction and the increase in the number of units and the reduction in parking spaces. So that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Ben?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this petition has been before us a few times in the last several months and year or so, or two years. You know, I do appreciate all the neighbors and the butters coming to speak on behalf of this petition, whether, you know, they're against or for this application. You know, it's not always a hard thing. Trust me, it's not, it's not easy either on this side of the table. You know, I think, for me at least, you know, I base this special permit and this application on its merits, you know, and it's not easy for us to vote yes or no, or it's black and white. You know, we operate in the kind of like gray space area, but you know, overall, I think this is a good project for the neighborhood, for the city. You know, are there some setbacks or downsides, of course, but I think that's, that's for any project, really. But overall, you know, based on the prerequisites and requirements, I think the applicant's shown that they can be approved, and you know, for me, I will be voting in favor of this application, so those are just my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. I just have a few comments. I do want to echo the concerns that Mike did bring up in regards to this letter handed to us tonight. We did receive several handouts from both the petitioner and from butters, as well as the citizen committee. And I do have a great amount of respect for citizens that volunteer their time in the city to express their concerns, voice their opinions, stand their ground, if you will, on sections of the city, which is community participation. But as it relates to this, this letter, I do share the same concerns that Michael does it. The copies are to everyone, including the citizens' council, however, it doesn't hold a memory to me. So when I look at, when I look at that, it's just a lot of information. We've expressed in the past that getting letters and information the night of is always troubling, but this is an open hearing that has gone back a long time. I'm sure the file is extensive. Mr. Coats, at every turn you have come here, you have been prepared. The timeline, I agree, has been set, it has been met. We have received, in the past, we were advised by the city law department to hold until the findings from the court were held, and that has taken place. I do have concerns with public safety, the concerns with public safety as a continued abandoned building. When we look at why you're here tonight and the relief you're seeking, some of the questions raise valid, and Dennis brought them forward as it relates to the elevation on the parking. As far as the snow storage, you did make sentiment that you would ensure that that does not value to greater height or disturbance of buttered property owners and the like. Would that, would that be including the removal of excess snow, and how would that be determined? So if it's 2015 and we get 136 inches of snow, what is the commitment? What is, and I'm not looking for a defined plan, is there a thought process with your direction to your management company that if it gets... if it gets X amount of feet high, it becomes burdensome, becomes a safety issue for rollover of snow? Would you, would you be removing that out of there? Is, is that going to be, as far as the snow storage, are we going to be clearing those two spots that are of concern now? Be plowing those in? But if that snow pile gets 80 feet by 10 feet, will you be removing that excess snow?
Absolutely. So the winter, so the beginning of 2015, obviously, that was an extraordinary winter, right? And it definitely required different procedures on our part. And so it required shoveling roofs off. It may require snow removal from the parcel. So that and some may be required. But what I could tell you is that, just like, you know, we provided a response in 2015, we will, we will have a response. We live in New England, so we know every winter there's a possibility that we can get just dumped on, and especially in a short period of time. So we would react accordingly.
Okay. If we could just touch briefly on the dumpster pad. Was that, was that a site change from the previous plan? Or was that?
I believe-
Was it set there prior?
I believe previously it was in the vicinity of where the snow storage is currently at.
Okay. That's what I thought.
It was moved subtly closer to the building.
I thought it was on the northeast sector of the property.
That's right. That's right.
And there is notations on your plan that it's going to be a concrete pad with fence enclosure, which is required.
Yes.
You'd have to hold that, so.
And also, at the back of the property, opposite, kind of next to the, adjacent to the snow storage area, the grade goes up a little. There will also be a vinyl fence, a stockade fence. So there will be some height of snow that the neighbors just won't see. Granted, they're at a slightly higher elevation, so they're kind of looking down at the property a little bit, so, you know, it won't hide everything, but there will be a six-foot fence. So it just won't be this big eyesore of a snow mound that they're looking at from their backyard.
Okay. I, I know Mr. McCarthy expressed his concerns with the positioning of those two, those standalone spots in, in the front of the, the snow storage. Is that information you'll be able to provide to the board on the elevations on that?
Yes. So a couple of things. The November 2015 approval had certain conditions that were included in that approval. And if I may, I just want to read those to the board, because I think it may be applicable here, and it goes without saying, I'd be totally fine with incorporating those same conditions, and I believe they may address most, if not all, of Member McCarthy's concerns. So the first one is that the final plans are to be reviewed by the city engineer. So I think that initial review has happened, but I'm totally fine with making that a condition of the approval. Secondarily, updated floor plans and elevations will be provided to DPD for review and approval. So, Member McCarthy, you're absolutely right. The elevations were not updated, and obviously, you're very keen, this is what you do for work, so you have a very keen eye for certain things, right? So they were not updated. Those decks along Meadow View Drive no longer exist. The site plan is the most recent plan, and so that makes elevations out of date. So there are no decks there. The retaining wall is approximately six feet tall. So I, I think you may have thought maybe it's 10 feet, but it's six feet tall. And then with respect to the grade in the rear, it wasn't flagged. Steve Topinski, the engineer, former Mac engineering, did not flag it as a concern when he designed it in there, but I made a note of it. I definitely will be bringing it back to him, and if you're okay with incorporating that same condition that we had in a November 2015 approval, I'm totally okay with incorporating that in if there should be such an approval tonight.
Mr. McCarthy?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd just like to put in the condition that it will meet the requirements of ADA-compliant parking.
Yes.
I'd like to see those be compliant. That's, that's, that's the bottom line.
Absolutely. And there's a, a last section that also states, from the November 2015 decision, this decision does not relieve the petitioner or any other person from this, excuse me, from the necessity of complying with all other applicable federal, state, and local statutes and ordinances and regulations. So I think that's even broader. So if you're okay with it, I'd be more than willing to accept that same language, and I, I think that's addressing your concern and some, hopefully.
It is.
Okay.
So we could adopt that condition tonight as part of the decision tonight for us to move forward. Great.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, or concerns from the board? Mr. McCarthy?
We would like to see, I think, a landscape plan, now that we've lost so much green space on Meadow, on Meadowland, Meadowbrook, sorry. I think that we want to update a landscape plan. That would be a condition that we'd want to see if anyone else is-
That's in the background. Landscape plan be reviewed.
Great, great. Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, could you clarify your condition as it relates to the ADA?
I, I think that Mr. Coats mentioned that we'll be meeting the applicable statutes, whether they're state or federal requirements for ADA compliance, so that's part of your condition already.
Yes. I, I think-
My, my point is that I didn't want to see us have to get some kind of relief for meeting ADA-compliant parking, because you're choosing to put this condition in the, in the facility, so I think you should be aware that you have a bit of a road to hoe here with getting 2% slope for that parking there.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Okay. All right. And I, I think in the, in your packet, you have the previous November 2015 approval, so we can literally lift, copy and paste those same conditions, and I think it addresses a landscape plan review complying with all state, local, federal regulations and ordinances and so forth.
Correct. Do we need incorporation of 2015 decision?
If the board is going to vote with the conditions, including 2015 decision, you do need to make a change to the Woodbine Avenue condition. That needs to be included if you choose to vote tonight.
So the change in condition would be the ruling with the exclusionary of Woodbine?
It would be adopting the opinion from the city solicitor that no, the exclusive parking on Woodbine Avenue, Avenue can't be counted towards their parking requirement.
Correct. Exclusionary language.
Quick question, Christine. So if we accept the amended site plan, though, wouldn't that just take care of that, even if we don't have to? We can adopt the law school, the city's solicitor's opinion, but if we're accepting the amended site plan as is, which doesn't include Woodbine Avenue, I mean, it kind of-
Correct.
Takes care of that anyways.
Correct.
But we have to, we do have to add that in as a condition, the acceptance of the amended site plan, so.
Any further discussion, the board?
Mr. Chairman, just, just in relation to the wording, to remove, to accept the site plan, as Mr. Callahan said, the amended site plan, and maybe to specify and to remove any parking in, as, as shown on the amended site plan from Woodbine Ave. I think, just to clarify that, just so there's no... The current site plan does not include Woodbine Ave, and I think to say, to show that and say that and specify that it doesn't, it, there's no parking counted on Woodbine Ave would clarify it.
Any further comments or discussion from any board members? With that being said, we have a motion.
Okay, bear with me here on the motions. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, let's see, make a motion to approve ZB 2017-34. Petition type is a special permit. The applicant is GPG Varnum LLC for the property located at 557 Varnum Avenue. The petition is that the applicant is seeking an amendment to previously granted special permit for, actually, hold on a second. I'll just read it as written.
Right. Read it as a record.
So again, the petition, the applicant is seeking an amendment to a previously granted special permit for a property located at 557 Varnum Avenue. The amendment requests to increase the total number of units from 13 to 18 residential units with 31 parking spaces. The project is located in the suburban single-family zoning district and requires an amendment to the special permit granted from the Zoning Board of Appeals under Section 4.5.2 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The applicant seeks the amendment pursuant to Section 4.5.2 and Section 6.1.3 of the Lowell zoning ordinance and any other relief required with the following conditions. Number one is to accept the conditions of the November 23rd, 2015 decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Two is to accept the amended site plan dated 12/29/2016, and specifically to recognize the adoption of the city solicitor's response regarding the exclusion of Woodbine Avenue, which is noted on the site plan. And three, just to restate that, as with all decisions, the applicant will meet or be required to meet all applicable federal, state, and local statutes and ordinances and regulations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with conditions.
Member Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Paglia?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Counselor? You've been, you've been approved with conditions. Appreciate your time. Thank the members of the public for coming out tonight.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. That being said, no other agenda items or other business or minutes to approve. Our next scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight. Do we have any handouts?
Yes.
We do. Do we have any other business to conduct tonight?
Unless the chair has anything else he'd like to bring up.
No, we'll, we'll, as previously discussed, we'll-
The interim chair.
Thank you. That being said, this Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is now closed. Any other comments? We have a motion to dismiss.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a good night.